Call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming out. Great to see everybody here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our one meeting in the holiday month. I hope you'll join me for a moment of silence and think of those less fortunate. Thank you so much. Again, great to see everybody. Nice to see the Christmas tree in here. We have an agenda before you. I've got it earlier last week. Any thoughts?
I would move to approve the agenda as presented, Mayor.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second and a half. Any further discussions? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We have an agenda. First item on our agenda is a public hearing on a proposed zoning amendment. Do we need some legal disclaimers to get into a public hearing?
A motion to go in. Well, actually, no. We do it a little bit different here, but if you would, just make a motion, go into a public hearing, and then I'll read the rules, things of that nature.
All right, so moved. Make a motion. We go into a public hearing.
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. So, prior to tonight's meeting, this, all the required notices for this public hearing have taken place. Anyone, of course, that wants to speak on the topic of the public hearing is able to speak during this time. Comments, however, will be limited to three minutes if they're a single person. Five minutes, however, if they're speaking on behalf of a group or if their statement's been submitted in writing to the town clerk prior to the meeting. We'll obviously call roll here in a second. Any and all comments are going to be taped here. We just asked everything to say oral and obviously concise to the to the matters relevant to the public hearing itself. Having said that, this particular public hearing is to consider a proposed zoning amendment to chapter 153 dot 076 A 9 H and 153 dot 076 D, off-street parking and loading. Purpose being create parking and driveway requirements for emergency services facilities. Has anyone signed up? No one signed up, so at this point, I'll just call from the crowd. Does anyone have any comments to make regarding the proposed zoning amendment I just discussed? That's enough, Mayor. I'm gonna turn it over to you guys for discussion.
Right, as you've probably read in your packet, for the benefit of the crowd here who might not be following this exciting event, we're talking about public facilities like the emergency medical station that's in the works. We didn't actually have anything on the books regarding how the driveways and the parking would be set up or what the rules were there for. So, staff worked that up. It went through the planning department and the planning board, who voted on it and recommended approval as it's presented. You know, the basics are up there. You could read it, but basically has something to do with how many parking spaces you would need and how wide the driveway access could be on the road. Did I miss anything? Sounds good. All right. So, that's a little recap. Any thoughts from the board otherwise? Move this thing forward.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I mean, if something they need and if we want them to provide emergency services, we're gonna need to do this, make this accommodation.
It's certainly one of those scenarios where all of the folks who know this stuff better than I do have weighed in on what the proper ratios would be. You know, I know that we have a ratio for retail that's one for 200 square feet, et cetera, et cetera. This one allows for space for every employee plus a bunch more parking spaces for anything that would have to do with training. It's a 200-square-foot ratio, which seems reasonable to my layperson brain.
I think so, too.
And, you know, lots of driveway space for the curb cut or whatever would be needed for emergency medical. Again, that's the experts have all weighed in on it. So, any other discussion on it?
I just moved to approve the proposed zoning amendment in that it's consistent with the, well, that it's consistent in section 153, 076 A 9 H and 153 point 076 D, off-street parking and loading. Created parking and driveway requirements for emergency service facilities is consistent with all comprehensive plans and all other official adopted plans of the town of Kill Devil Hills that are applicable. The amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides adequate development standards for emergency services.
Couldn't have said it better myself. We have a motion on the floor and a second from Mr. Gray. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Again, big thanks to staff and everybody in emergency services that weighed in and worked on this project to get that going. The next item on our agenda is, let's see, public comment. We do this twice at every meeting. You can talk about anything you like. Same kind of rules apply, three minutes and five minutes, but really any topic you'd like to speak on. You could here and now or and/or at the end of the meeting as well. We'll have a second public comment. Anyone like to speak tonight? Did anyone sign up? There is one. Oh, here we go. Somebody did sign up. The first on the list is Marie Rugerio. I think I'm pronouncing that right?
Close enough.
Close enough, sorry. Rugerio. No, I don't know. Oh, that's better, okay.
That was better. Rugero, but that's okay. It's fine. I live at 405 West Martin Street, and I just wanted to say real quick that I am in support of the proposed lower speed limit on the west side of KDH. I am in support of anything that will slow people down on the west side of KDH. It's currently 25, as you all know, and probably now. And the speed at which people go down those streets, Martin Street in particular, because that's where I live, is unbelievable. So, lowering the speed limit and enforcing it really, I think, is the key there. I know in the past, and you guys can look it up, I'm sure, they, I've called the police department and I've emailed a bunch of a bunch of you guys, probably tired of me, about the speed limit, and they put out the speed boxes, the ones that actually track the speed limits, and they have clocked people in the 50s, 64, 60-something on Martin Street, so I'm good with whatever. Anything you can do to slow that, slow that traffic, because it's not even safe to send my child out to get the mail from the mailbox. So, thank you for putting that out there. Thank you for listening.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm afraid of trying anybody's last name. Laura with an S. Swisher. I forgot that.
That's super easy. At least I didn't put my maiden name on there. MBELI, so you would have done both. Hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name's Laura Swisher. My husband, Paul, and I live at 900 West Third Street. I'm here to vocal, provide very vocal support to lowering the speed limit on the west side of Kill Devil Hills. We are very appreciative of the upgrades that we've had on West Third Street. The sidewalk is wonderful. The new paving job has created an environment that is fraught with opportunity to speed. The speeding on West Third Street is horrible. I work from home. I have three dogs. I walk them twice a day. And crossing and/or just walking on the sidewalk is treacherous. And I'm worried that somebody's gonna get hit, whether it's me or another resident. We've contacted Kill Devil Hills Police and asked for increased enforcement. We get it for an hour here and there. I hear the sirens. I see people getting pulled over. So, enforcement is happening, and I know that they're spread very thin and can't be with us 24/7 to enforce it, but I, too, would also be supportive. If it's not a reduction, if they're not following 25, maybe they won't follow 20, and it'll be even harder to enforce. Any action would be great, including stop signs. Stop signs on all the streets that provide a traffic light to the bypass or the access bay drive would certainly, I think, do a good job at slowing people down at best. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah. Appreciate it. Those are the two I had signed up. Floor is open. Anybody else who'd like to get up there? Going once, going twice. There'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Thank you both. Really appreciate it. Any other response to public comment? I think we're gonna discuss it, I guess, later, but if anybody wanted to. Okay, we will move right into it. So, ongoing business, our first item is, or I think in, or business, I think that, right, just new business. First item of new business is proposed, proposed reduction of west side speed limit to 20 miles per hour. So, that is what we're getting into right away. So, we've got the memos from the town manager. Did you wanna say anything?
Attached to the memo that I've provided you is also a memo from Steve Albright, Public Services Director, who references the manual on uniform traffic control devices that the Board of Commissioners has adopted. Staff recommendations also includes the review of the police department's speed and crash data and the town engineer's analysis. And the town engineer, Pete Burkhammer, is here, and Derek Dale, also, if you have any questions with them.
Gotcha. So, help me recap here, just for the, for getting the conversation started. Tell me if I've got this generally right. I think uniformly, we're all very concerned about speeding and danger, right? So, we're looking for solutions that, that could help mitigate those risks. But when it comes to the ordinance that you just mentioned, I forget it off the top of my head.
MUTCD.
MUTCD. It doesn't just roll off the top?
It doesn't for me.
If I'm understanding that correctly, and tell me if I've got this right, it basically says that in order to change the speed limit away from the statutory speed limit, which is 25 in that, in that general kind of roadway, an engineering study needs to be done in order to, to support those changes, or have I, have I described that correctly?
It recommends.
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 It's one of those things, when government documents say recommends, I'm always a little unsure what they mean by that.
Right.
So, I guess you can act without it, but it's not advised, as it were.
That would, that's my understanding, yes.
And, and if I could recap the data, we've collected a ton of data on, from those speed devices. And the good news is that generally, most people don't speed, right? Is that the takeaway there? Oh, there, we do have some occasional outliers that, of these folks that spoke, definitely notice, yeah. And we've got some folks from our police department. I'm sure that they know off the top of their head kinda how often we ticket and have a feel for that, too. Would any of you guys like to speak on that?
Last year, from January to the present, we've issued 57 speeding tickets, all on the west side, and issued 102 warning citations to that same area. That's not kind of verbal warnings, but maybe given, not documents, but also stop signs, because you need to slow down a little bit when you go anywhere.
Gotcha. How does that, how does that, we have 60-some-odd miles of roadways, probably three-quarters of on the west side. How, how does that stack up to?
So, this is only a fraction of the speeds we have.
Oh, a ton more on bypass, of course, yeah, yeah.
Bypassing on NC 12, any roads in between there.
Right, right. I guess what I was really trying to ask was, how does, how does that number stack up to that number of residential street miles compared to places across the state?
That doesn't translate out.
We don't have that, okay. These are the kinds of things my little data brain wants to figure out. And then I guess, Pete, I know you know this kinda world inside and out. Would you be interested in speaking a little extemporaneously about what works and what historically has and hasn't worked with in regard to changing behaviors in terms of speeding? Uh-oh, what's he got here?
Which Pete do you want? I'm gonna start with, well, of course, my academic Pete. Start with a town engineer hat. American Engineering is thankful for the chance to be of service and is at your beck and call and also subscribes to the MUTCD, MUTCD, which is not an ordinance at all. It is a guideline, an engineer's guideline on how to regulate and control traffic through signs and devices. It does suggest a study for either a deviation from a statutory speed limit or to create a new statutory speed limit, which sounds more like what, that you're contemplating tonight. And we will do a study. We will conceive and give you a proposal for and perform a study as best we can to try to gather the data to do a scientific and technically-based adjustment to the speed limit sign if one is indicated.
Yeah, he has another hat. The other non-hat. Oh, he has actually a second hat. Love it.
Pete Burkhammer, 302 St. Louis Street, Kill Devil Hills, North Carolina. Fellow citizen to Ms. Rugero and Ms. Swisher over there. My good friend from the West Third Street Wars. There is a problem. There's no question there's a problem. My own personal, but not on your nickel, engineering instincts would lead me to gather data in the form of blanketing the west side with perhaps a dozen and a half, or 20, or even 25, your speed signs. Not just a sample here and move it here and move it here, but put them out for a long time for the sake of the data and for the sake of the self-correcting factor that it has on me as your favorite laboratory rat. I know how they work for me, and they probably won't work for the violators, the, anybody who's a big enough jerk, and I say that as a term of engineering precision, to go even 40 miles an hour in a 25, much less 50 or 64, is incorrigible, and no, nothing we do in a civilized proceeding like this is gonna help us anything with that. Hard enforcement, reckless driving enforcement is, is all you can do for somebody like that. And they're probably under the influence of something anyway to do something that dumb. But I know it, the effect it has on me, and it, it just feels, remember, I'm not wearing this hat right now, but it just feels to me like the good people who would then be asked to creep along at 20 or 22 on roads that feel right at 25, that it would be better to gather a lot of data, even though it would be expensive. And I'll go so far as to say this. If you'll spend 50 grand on your speed signs, I'll go off the American Engineering clock and do the engineering analysis from the data that comes from that for free, just so that you'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of break even. You might be interested in finding out what data it does bring back. Supposedly, because a road does drive best at a certain natural speed, supposedly, you ought to be setting the speed limit within a few miles per hour of the 85th percentile speed, recognizing there are gonna be 15% who'll go a little over that, maybe a lot over that. We're talking about the 1% or 2% that are going way over that, the idiots. And I just, I think that as much as I totally agree with the ladies who spoke so well tonight, that it is a problem. It needs to be addressed. I don't know about enforcement. I don't know, do you enforce at 7 over? Do you enforce at 11 or 12 over? Where do you enforce? And what happens if you enforce and the courts won't back you up? Have you at least inconvenienced the people who are doing 35 or 32 enough to where they'll be tempered down a little bit? These are not easy questions. I just, the, the guy with the Kill Devil Hills address just feels inclined to try to appeal to the better angels of people. The people between the 85th percentile and the 98th or 99th, see if perhaps a PR program combined with some your speed signs could bring them in line and just absolutely enforce without mercy on those 1% or 2%. That's just me. Thank you for the opportunity to share that, and I love and respect every one of you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Pete. Thanks. Yeah, so I didn't get to ask the other question. So, you said $50,000 is kinda to have those, those, those gadgets that tell you your speed and show blue lights if you're going over. They're about 5K apiece?
Less in bulk.
Less in bulk?
Yeah. And, and these are the, the ones that are stationary?
The radar stationary your speed.
Right.
You just strap them onto any old existing post on the street, right?
When you get the bells and whistles that when you go way over, it goes red, white, and blue, and all flashing on you, they may be closer to 5, but I've seen them for 2500.
The one on Southern Shore actually tells you to slow down.
There's words. They got the $6,000 one, man. Oh, yeah, yeah.
The one at the toll done that, too.
Oh, me, was that guy? From a couple hundred yards.
So, if I could object, the issue with the lower-end ones, the 2500 ones that Pete was referencing, is most of those are battery-operated, and they have a manual download. So, we would have to change, we would have to have a person to change those batteries. When you're talking 20, 30 signs, to change those batteries and download that data.
It took a lot of time.
Yeah, and the higher-end ones, the 5300 that I think I sent you the quote, you can download it from the office, and they're solar-powered. So, that's the difference.
Yeah, you get a lot more data, because they're out there, you know, week, weekend, week out.
Right, and so it takes a person off the road to change all those batteries out, keep them charged, and whatnot.
Those things all have costs, right, yeah. Just pay it a different way. So, wanted to open it up for discussion and not hog the mic. So, I know that, Terry, you, you brought this forward.
I did, and I'm very much in support of reducing it to 20. I've talked to a lot of citizens that have that concern. With the COVID issue, there's a lot more people that are at home and staying at home, and they're out walking their dogs and they're playing with the kids. I knew in a conversation I had with one of them, I said, you know the little green men with the orange flag? You see a whole lot more of them out there now.
That's true.
And, you know, because people are concerned about people's feeding. I have a road right near my house, Quail Lane, which I know people are flying down there. I don't know what the speed is, but it's got to be at least 40 mile an hour down there, maybe even faster. Third Street, I, I hear some pretty bad horror stories about that. And I think in general, we've got to do something. I know that NAGC, and that's not a justifier for doing it, but I know they had the same issue, and they lowered their speed limit to 20 on the west side. And, you know, some of the comments I've heard from some of those folks is, it's helped a little bit. Is it gonna deter at all? Probably not, but it might cause people to lower, you know, what they're exceeding the speed by. So, I, number one, I support it 100%, and we've gotta do something to try to slow people down because they're just going too fast.
I'd like to chime in, too. When we first started having this discussion, it was right about the time daylight savings time ended. And every day, especially when we have rush hour, I guess, KDH rush hour traffic going home in our east-westbound roads, the sunset is right in our cars' faces, and it makes it extremely difficult to see. Some days worse than others, and the same thing happens in the morning on the way to work. And, you know, the, the natural instinct is to slow down in those circumstances. Not everybody does. And maybe lowering the speed limit for some of those roads where visibility is challenged at dusk, it could help that.
I know you've talked to folks. We, we all try to do our own little anecdotal collection of data.
You know, I've picked, I know a lot of, a lot of families with little kids in town, and so I've kinda tried to poll a few. I'm, I also spend a good majority of my day outside in my yard with lots of little kids. If you've ever been out in the house, I have a huge barrier that basically prevents kids from getting to the street because our street is, is pretty fast as well. So, I didn't find anyone who said it was a bad idea to lower the speed limit. I think I talked to about 10 or 12 people. So, but again, you know, I'm like, Pete, that's, that's creeping. Admittedly, I have a tiny bit of a lead foot, not in neighborhoods, but, but it is, but I've tried to go several times now, go 20, and it's, it's effort. Like, you have to make effort to go, to go 20. So, I personally, I think, I, I think something needs to be done. I like the idea of the boxes a lot. It's a very, I mean, we've had one on Martin, and it, man, it self-corrects people. You can see people come to that box, and they, it works. It definitely works. So, I think maybe what we need is a combination, like, let's see what it would be to potentially do a study. Let's, let's put some money into getting some more boxes. I mean, I, I would be all for that. Even if we lower the speed, I'd like to see us invest in some more boxes, you know, especially those solar ones that's not taking time away from our force, so.
Yeah, I think it's interesting to reduce the speed to 20, you know, so hopefully people will go 30 at 20.
Instead of 35.
Yeah, instead of 35. I think that's just natural, but, you know, 20 is really hard to do. I don't like, you know, basically punishing, so to speak, everybody for the, for the outliers, you know, like Pete so eloquently said. I think that, you know, those are the people that need, you know, enforcement. I'd like to see more enforcement on the roads, you know, just the officers I'd like to see. I think, at least I always report on my road, which is Bay Drive, and it's become like a, like a bypass of sorts, you know, especially since it's been paved. You know, so I don't see, to be honest, a lot of officers on the road. Just, just as my, as my side, I see them patrolling, but I don't see a lot of tickets being written. So, but that, that's neither here nor there. I think that the, you know, reducing it to 20 west side, the entire west side, might be, just seems extreme to me, but the boxes, if we could do some study with the boxes and get some, some data as to what, what roads might, might, might need it, maybe, maybe not all the roads on the west side, but, but the ones that do. And just kinda study, study that, you know, those, those, obviously, the police officers would use the data to, to maybe figure out what roads need more enforcement as well, you know? So, so the, so the data's always good. We gotta use it. Now, we gotta use it. If we see some, like, a lot of outliers on Martin, or if you see a lot of outliers on Bay, or any of these third, you know, these streets that people are shooting, you know, down now, that don't have stop signs, then, you know, they might need the 20. They might need more officers, all of that. All of the roads, I mean, 20 is tough, you know. It's kinda like, it's almost, it seems almost like a joke when you see it to me. When you see it on roads nowadays, you see 20, you're like, 20? Can't put your foot on the gas, but, but like I said, that'll maybe bring people down to 30, and that's what we at least want, you know? So, I'm just being realistic, because I think we're all, you know, I could ride my bike at 20, so. So, anyway, but the data, the data's good. Those, those things do stop, slow people down, for sure, those boxes, so. But using that, you know, to figure out, okay, where's the outliers? What street are the most outliers on, you know? Are the most outliers on Martin, Third, Bay, wherever it may be, you know, that's, that may be the roads we need to do it. Not maybe entirely sweeping the west side with a 20 mile per hour, but... You know, that's, that may be the roads we need to do it, not maybe entirely sweeping the west side with a twenty mile per hour, but I don't know. I don't know. Say, it, it, I'm not against it, of course. I'm not, I'm not like, I don't think anybody's against it. That's why you don't see a lot of people here. I don't think anybody would say they're flat out against it. I just, it seems like it's extreme, a little bit extreme for the outliers that exist that go everybody at twenty, you know? That's my opinion.
Do we know if NAGCSD did a speed study before changing? No.
They did not. I, I asked that question. They didn't do a study. Um, and, and don't get me wrong. Pete and his group do fantastic work. They've done miracles with, with drainage and so forth. I don't think we need to study on this either. I, I wouldn't support that.
I, I get that instinct that, uh, you know, the.
Not for free?
Dollar, million dollars, right?
Wait a second.
You hear that one?
He said, I mean, he's gonna look at the boxes anyway.
So, yeah, we do have that offer. We appreciate that. That's great. I'd love to just get your take on the data.
And the town manager sent us some information that was passed on from the police department, and that's exactly what the boxes are designed to do, is to make people consciously aware of their speed, and they were. They've done studies on them in, in a lot of different areas other than here. And they found out that in the, uh, ninety-eight percentile, they're affected. You know, for slowing people down. But I am of the opinion that I don't like speed bumps. I don't think that's the way to go. I don't think that four-way stop signs are the way to go. I think we need to lower the speed limit twenty mile an hour.
A- and the interesting thing is, uh, there, there ha- there'd almost be nicer to have the information of locals versus vac- vacationers because it is a real, I, I, I mean, obviously we have vacationers in our west side neighborhoods now because of our Airbnbs and all that. So, so we do have a lot more vacationers in the west side and we didn't, you know, ten years ago. So now, like, are these locals trying to get home from work? I mean, I, I'm guilty saying I'm running around, you know, um, quickly running my kids to this and that and, you know, like my hair's on fire sometimes, but, um, so I know locals do want to get home or they do, they are running errands. But I will, I'd also wonder like how many, how much of that is vacationer traffic, you know what I'm saying? It will never, that, that's really hard to break that down, but, you know, e- e- education or whatever. I mean, do you care about your community? Like you're worried about the people that live around you or are you here for a week and maybe, maybe you're just kind of like, you know?
I mean, it really comes down to efficacy in my mind. Like, I, I always circle back to the data. It may not be that we need a local study, but you're right, we're not reinventing the wheel here. Twenty versus twenty-five miles an hour has been studied for hundreds of thousands of hours by thousands of universities and, and, uh, departments of transportation across the nation have studied this, uh, and we haven't. I know I haven't. I've tried to. It's not, doesn't all pop up when you Google it, but, um, um, but I get, what, the little I have seen is not making me feel good about the twenty mile an hour, the twenty mile an hour actually achieving the goal. I want to achieve the goal. The goal is we have, uh, dangerous drivers, you know, some number of them. And we're trying to figure out how do we change that behavior? And, uh, you know, I'm not fully convinced that changing the speed limit accomplishes that. Um, doesn't have a good track record that I could find online quickly as, you know, like, I did my own research. No. I really, I really am a fan of kind of like academic research on this kind of thing. Um, and I think, you know, NAGCSD probably hasn't had it in effect long enough to really get a good feel for it. And it's, but, but it's a tiny, tiny small town. There are thousands of small towns that have had the same exact problem. You know, if, if we could go back in time, we'd make all the roads curvy, right? Because I know that actually works, right? That's why nowadays, modern, modern, uh, residential neighborhoods always have curvy streets. Because you can't go but so fast, uh, if this curve is a certain amount, right? And, uh, and Pete speaks to that whole idea about the psychology of it too. If you, if you have houses that are right on the curb, you know, if you go through a small town in West Virginia and the houses are, you know, built way back in and they're all right on the sidewalk, you would be really uncomfortable driving more than twenty-five miles an hour because it's right there on you. But our streets have a big right of way and big front yards and usually a driveway and it feels right to go twenty-five miles an hour. And it'll feel extremely slow all the way down Third Street at twenty. If you're gonna be the, you know, one that follows the rule, that's a law, that's adding an extra minute to that drive, like, oh, still driving down Third Street at twenty. So I see that there are un- 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 you know, unintended negative consequences too. Um, that's not to say that I can't be convinced otherwise. I am leaning towards more study and boxes and I don't know if you're still standing because you want to say something, but I want to recognize if you want to.
No, but I have been told that, um, some of the NAGCSD residents want a, want the speed limit to go back up to twenty-five during the winter. Uh, so they want a winter speed limit and a summer speed limit. Um, also, the question was posed to me, well, what about the east side? It makes more sense for them to decrease the speed on the east side because there's so many people going back and forth across two beaches.
Pedestrians, yeah.
And pedestrians, and you know that's a, a, a trouble spot during July fourth anyway, uh, with people going back and forth, so. Just, uh, some food for thought.
Thank you. Appreciate that too. Interesting you mentioned speed bumps, uh, and I don't know what their track record is either, and I know that nobody likes going over them, but you definitely don't like going over them fast, so at least you know they have some effect. They certainly slowed me down. Uh, and I remember when I was young, I tried to drive over them fast and then they realized that's not, that's not a good idea. And you're like sixteen, you're like, what? Oh, jeez, that was, that was a bad idea. Uh, find out that the way, the hard way, but, you know, and I don't know what we can do as a government as far as public shaming, but I'm a big fan. No, I'm just kidding. I just think like if you take people's pictures and put it in the paper, here's our, here's our offenders. It's Joe Bob. He did it. Um, I remember I grew up in, uh, our military family moved around a lot. We lived in Germany for three years when I was a teenager. And Germany in the eighties, they had a box on the side that would not only get your speed, it wouldn't tell you you were speeding. It just took a picture, your license plate, sent you the ticket. Now you just got it in the mail, hundred dollars. There it is. Caught you. They've been doing that since the eighties, so I don't know when we're gonna catch up to that level of, uh, surveillance, but I know we have the tech for this. Very easy.
They definitely do it.
Oh, yeah.
They do it on.
I think we probably have the tech to shoot it at the thing and put your last name up on the billboard, right? There it is, Smith. He did it.
They have toll roads in, 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 that they know how long it should take from one to the next. They know exactly how many people are speeding and who's speeding at all times. Because, you know, if you go s- at the speed limit, it should take you X amount of time to get from this toll to the next.
License plate, one, two, three, four, here, here, click. Your average was such and such. So anyway, very interesting topic. Um, I'm not sure where we want to go from here. Um, if I'm reading it correctly, we're, we're not feeling super unanimous, but we're definitely not done, ready to put this down either. So you tell me where, where do you think we're ready to go?
Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Uh, uh, looking for an up or down vote?
Yes, sir. I'll make the motion that we, uh, uh, have staff, uh, take the necessary steps uh, to, uh, lower our speed limit to twenty mile an hour on the west side in Kill Devil Hills.
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
All right. You know, I guess that's the way it goes. Any, uh, we have a motion and a second? One last chance for further discussion. Um, I've talked a bunch over, it's, this is, this meeting makes three years as mayor. Time flies. It was like COVID mayor, but now mayor, right? We've had a lot of unanimous votes and I've been very proud of the fact that we, we come together on a lot of things and I, I like to slow it down when we can't get to a unanimous spot. I think we all want to solve this problem and this may not be a unanimous vote, so. Um, so be it. Uh, anyone else have any last remarks? All right, uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Uh, is that two to three, yeah?
Yeah.
All right, so motion. Motion does not carry, yes, motion fails.
That's right. Motion.
I do have a question. Chief, I'd like to know if we, what I would like to see is us put a motion towards getting some, um, staff to work on what ordering boxes would look like, how, how many, how mu- you know, Pete's saying they're cheaper in that, that's what I would like to see us do. And, and i- if that's something that Chief thinks that we can utilize and get to, get to a point where we're more comfortable with.
Sure.
Um, so just curious if.
Well, Pete's already, I respect Pete a whole lot and he's already threw the number out there. What was it? Uh, twenty or thirty?
I'll take him back.
So I can't go, I'm not gonna go against Pete.
I'm ready to take Pete up on his offer to analyze his data for free.
Happy to, but.
That's what I'm saying.
Chief has checked his prices and he, he has checked more closely than I have
Okay.
about the solar and the self-reporting and everything, all of which totally dwarf any advantage of them having to go out and change batteries and do on the spot readings. So I stand down on the cost of those puppies.
The engineer spoke.
But I do believe they work, um, and, uh, so I'll be in, in favor of how many, uh, the town can, think they can afford. Um, because, you know, we have hundreds of roads, uh,
Right.
in KDH, so.
Super, we appreciate that.
Maybe we could start with, like our, there are fair streets, like Third Street. Right. Um, Martin.
But what we had, had in the past was vandals, um, that do not like our speed signs, uh, for enforcement. Or either, and we've had some destroyed by weather before, and that have fallen off in the water and gotten, you know, damaged. So, you know, obviously they'd have to be in insured and whatnot, but, uh, yeah, um, as many signs. Of course, if, if we only had five or ten, we would have to move them from, because everybody, e- every street would want one in, in the neighborhood, you know? Um, so, you know, got, got to think whether they're gonna be fixed or whether they're gonna be, uh, movable.
So, yeah, I'd go a little further and say, we'd love to get your department's expert opinion, knowing our community. Sort of a hierarchy of, you know, Third Street and landing, you know, ones that go east to west, there's real straight or probably top of the list if you could make a kind of descending order wishlist of the places that would be most beneficial. Obviously, we want to have every dollar of the taxpayer that we spend be as effective as possible. And maybe we can have an A and a B plan, a small plan, a big plan, and, and then we could talk to finance about how our budget's looking and see what we can fit into this budget or, or what we could work on for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Um, the other thing I thought too is, and I don't know if this is necessarily the police department or maybe it's, it's town staff, is that, uh, you know, we, we, uh, do this job part-time. Uh, but if there was some time and effort to research, you know, other communities of what they've found to be successful in changing behavior, um, and even maybe in the legal, like, can we take people's pictures and send them a ticket? I don't know. Is there a law against that? Um, can we put people's pictures in the paper? Can we make a big sign on Third Street with their faces on it? Like, I don't know how far you can go and get away with it around here. But, uh, uh, you know, psychology is, is a big part of this.
I, please don't.
Oh, no.
I have no idea right now.
They don't do that anymore.
But it'd be a fun research topic for sure.
So anyway, no.
What about, what about adding stop signs to those long straight roads? Like one in the middle somewhere?
I, I think Pete would probably weigh in that they don't have a good track record of.
I, I think, I, I think the town has tried that before, uh, somewhere around two thousand and eight, um, on Bay Drive. And it didn't work too well.
No, you forget Bay. How about like Third? I mean, because it's a long straight or Martin where it's a long straight. Maybe somewhere in the middle they're having a, having a stop sign if there was an intersection that could warrant that.
And, and I think the MUTCD, uh, manual states that stop signs and speed bumps are not to be used for, um, speed enforcement. Or not recommended.
I remember hearing that, yeah. I know, I know that, I know that's, that's been told us.
I go back to the beginning where you talked about the MUTCD and Pete said it's a recommendation. That particular book is what we use to make decisions on stop sign request for people that want a mid-block stop sign because they're not effective and they can actually be very dangerous if stop signs are located in places
Well, they're not expected.
that are not expected.
Yeah.
It can cause s- significant amount of trouble, but the Board of Commissioners, and it wasn't particularly this board, but they did adopt the MUTCD as their primary guidance, more than recommendation, but how we make decisions
Mm-hmm.
on traffic safety and how to move traffic safely through our town. So it is a book of recommendations, but the town adopted that recommendation as this is what we are using to be s- to make, to be standardized and
Yeah, no, I get it. I, I just still.
Sometimes those stop signs can be really dangerous.
Yeah, you don't want to put one where you don't expect it, but if you can see it, and that was the problem on a couple of the roads. It was like, there was no four-way, it wasn't a four, it wasn't a four-way s- it wasn't an intersection.
You can't have a four-way if you only have three s- you know, s- the ones on Bay Drive were three ways.
The one, right, and that was the problem. They weren't expected. There is a four-way. The, the one, the one that has it on the four-way.
There's only one at Fifth Street is the only four-way.
Fifth Street, Fifth Street.
Because the road extends.
Right.
Well, circling back just to recap, I guess, we, we are, we're all in the same mode of, you know, trying to find more solutions and more ideas and things that are based on science and, and, uh, research and, and, you know, so that we don't create unintended negative consequences or, or risks or dangers. Um, because that's certainly not something we want to be doing. Um, uh, and I think we, we do have some flexibility in the budget and we definitely have the political will to, to put some other, um, you know, technology in place that, that hopefully starts making a difference on this problem that is probably not ever one hundred percent solvable. You know, we're just trying to mitigate. So, um, I, I appreciate.
So we'll research that for the mayor and, uh, we'll give a recommendation to Ms. Diaz, uh,
Excellent.
as far as how many signs that I think is possible.
That sounds great. Thank you so much. And thank you, give it to me. Appreciate it. All right, I think we have exhausted that. But I know, uh, our two citizens came and spoke, uh, appreciate the, uh,
Thank you.
seeing the conversation and thanks for, uh, adding some gravitas to the conversation. The next item on our new business list is, uh, appointments. The first one is a personnel board. Get to the right page here. So our good friend Sue Kelly, uh, is on the personnel board. Her term expires January twenty twenty-three. She has expressed a desire for reappointment. Um, I know I'm a fan.
I am as well.
And, uh, given that she is interested and willing to do it again, um, anybody like to weigh in?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations, Sue, if you're listening online. Thank you for all you do for the town. We really appreciate it. Also making the town beautiful year after year in a lot of different ways. Got my stuff out of order again.
Mayor's agenda.
I was like, where did I put my? Where my one disappeared?
You got a ton of stuff to bring up, don't you?
Oh, no. Zero.
All right, committee reports. That's where we're at.
None here.
None here?
No, sir.
Um, just, I have a Board of Tourism meeting Thursday, um, this coming Thursday, but, um, they, with, the survey is now closed. The Long Range Tourism Plan Survey, or the Residential Survey, they're now conducting, um, group interviews. If anyone is interested in that, please let me know. They're very specific. Some are education, some are government. Um, I plan on sitting in both of those. Um, and then from there, they'll, they'll begin to gather the information and so we can start to make a plan. Um, in addition to that, the Board of Tourism has also added, um, a volunteerism, um, section to their website, which is really cool because it includes nonprofit organizations, um, around the Outer Banks and events that you might, ways you might be able to get involved if you're visiting and want to get involved or organizations to donate to, so, um, so I thought that was a really cool way to maybe tap into tourism, um, for, for some volunteer opportunities here.
That's great. Super.
Um, yes, uh, I wanted to thank you all again for supporting my appointment to the Coastal Resources Advisory Council. I attended that meeting, uh, November sixteenth down in Beaufort. Um, it was kind of more of an orientation. There was a lot of new faces on the board appointed and, uh, we did a deep dive on how land use plans work and how they are kind of agreements between municipalities, counties and the state on how we manage our coastal waterways. Um, I attended a good portion of the Coastal Resources Commission meeting on the seventeenth. Got to see some variance hearings, which were a lot more high stakes than I was prepared for. Kind of a, you know, there's, there's a big project to get to that stage and people really fight hard for them. Um, with all the things discussed, the one thing that affects Dare County a lot is coming back from the CRC to the CRC is, uh, how will we address? is uh, how will we address septic systems for houses that are falling into the ocean or or getting consumed by any waterway across North Carolina, and we're really taking our time to look into this and and bring some good recommendations forward to mitigate damage and pollution through that, so uh, that doesn't affect K D H terribly too much, but it does Dare County and um, you know, as we have our quarterly meetings, I'll keep everybody posted.
Great.
Yeah, it was, the the Black Pearls septic tank is washing into the Surf Ride as we speak.
Well.
Rough week down there. You know, essentially you say that uh, I would've been working from home all week if it wasn't for uh, the fact we have a new bridge right now. Like, right now, this kinda just big surf event, not even a name storm, nothing really going on, it's completely filling up that whole place that used to be a road. You know, they've taken the roadway out, so it's a little bit lower, so it looks like a canal through there right now, so that's something, if you get a chance, Altitude Twelve had a nice video they posted yesterday of it where you can really see it in detail. And, you know, that whole road of houses is all got water underneath it right now. Um, I don't know if you heard, they they changed one of the little roads there, so a whole bunch of those houses are gonna be able to move forward, but not very far, but anybody who wants to can, so we'll see how many of them actually do. But yeah, seeing that septic tank always makes you.
No, bad feeling.
Feel bad about things, right, that's tough. All right, so that has been our um, Commissioner's Agenda, is there anything else?
Committee rec, committee next.
Hmm, I'm sorry, committee reports, sorry, jumped ahead there, so we're good with committee reports, now Commissioner's Agenda. Want to continue?
Yeah, I I got a few things, um, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce, they invited me to uh, be on the panel for the Leadership O B X Municipal Government seminar, which they had here, uh, it was last week on the thirtieth, uh, had a packed house. Uh, it was a really, real good program, I was impressed, and a lot of quality uh, emerging leaders in our community, a lot of good questions, and they didn't hold back on us, so it was nice to have um, you know, be a part of that panel and have a chance to interact with the community in a informal but professional way. Um, I wanna compliment staff on how well our holiday market went last week. Um, I would, the town did a gratitude because now I don't have to worry about my Christmas card picture, it's all worked out. The Santa Claus was right on time, he was working hard. And one family ended, I thought was fun, is uh, my youngest son is three years old and none of my kids I would ever call shy and he power marched right up to Santa and he turned around and he hunched his butt in the air and he put his elbows up, it's like, pick me up, let's get to work here, and he didn't, didn't hesitate or hold back and that really tickled me, see how much he enjoyed it. So, and it, the decorations are still there for everybody to enjoy, it's beautiful. And staff did a great job. Uh, one last thing uh, to share with the group, I um, someone recently shared an idea with me that I'm pretty excited about, I've talked to a few of you about this already. Um, we are flush with mulch, we have an awful lot of it, but the way we have it set up, only people with pickup trucks and trailers and are physically able are able to to collect it and utilize it, so while we have it for everybody, there's only a proportion of people who can actually get to it. And one idea that I liked was, and it was shared with me, is maybe designate or certain days where people can make appointments and we could actually bring a load of mulch to someone's house and drop it off for them. They would, you know, spread it out and do all that work on their own, but for people who don't have trucks, who don't have trailers or some of our senior citizens who may not be physically able to load one up, this could be a nice option for them to be able to access that resource, we got plenty of it. And uh, that process works well, this just may be able to give more people access to it that don't have a chance to do that now. I know there's there's expense involved, there's labor involved, we have the resources and, you know, I'm just asking staff, maybe we could put something together, a certain amount of days in the off-season where people could make an appointment, and a load could be dropped off at their house. So, I don't know how, I'll let the board chew on that, see what you think, and maybe staff can make a recommendation at a future meeting for that.
And Terry and I spoke about it a little bit, and and we were saying, yeah, it's tricky because, you know, all of our town staff has a full plate, they're all busy working, particularly in the off-season, they have lots of projects they're trying to get through. Um, and yeah, we don't really know the demand, you know, there might be a whole lot of people that wanna, and you don't wanna promise something, you can't deliver if hundreds of people show up for it, but I like the idea of.
Something went wrong, please try again.
Whoa.
Siri had an opinion about that.
Anyway, um, uh.
Watch it, Mayor.
Got scolded by Siri, oh my god. But uh, you know, maybe it's a volunteer thing, maybe we could say, hey, um, you know, on these certain Saturdays in, you know, April and May, when people are doing a lot of mulching, to say, hey, do you have a pickup truck, do you wanna volunteer, you know, we, if you come to the thing and you say you want mulch, you know, we've got a couple of guys with pickup trucks who volunteer to help you load it into their truck and then help you unload it at your place, but you gotta participate on both ends, uh, that sort of thing. Um, or maybe um, Terry, Terry brought up the idea of those places, we have, we have a pile right, where is it, right here, near the park.
Yeah.
Um, but we do have a lot of paper streets and we have a lot of uh, other parks in the town that might have a corner somewhere, Hayman Park or some other smaller park where we could put a little uh, a bin for the month of April and.
Yeah, I was thinking that way, um, but I didn't really think about what John uh, talked about with people that just don't have a vehicle to get it.
Yeah.
And so I think, I think there's merit there, uh, and I think we do need to figure out if there's something we can do. Uh, you know, I I was just thinking of putting a different site up to the northern part of town so people can pick it up.
A little more convenient.
But they're still not gonna have a truck to be able to do it.
Hmm.
So, that, I mean, that's a valid point, and I I think we need to investigate it, John, good idea.
Yeah.
Particularly like, did you mention that there's like, it's a problem that we have too much mulch that's gonna.
I can't speak to it being a problem to have too much mulch, but it is an idea to just make it available to more more people who may can't utilize it right now.
I think we have an overabundance, don't we, David?
Yeah, we're not.
I don't know that it's a problem.
Derek, maybe you can talk to that.
Well, we, we have a lot of mulch. And we're, we've finally gotten caught up to where we're finally kinda gotten rid of the past few, we hadn't had a storm in a while, so we finally caught up, when we, after the last few rounds of storms, we really never worked through the whole pile of mulch through the year. Like, we had uh, we'd take, we'd have some delivered, where people would pick it up from um, Elizabethan Gardens, people like that, we would give it away to um, some municipal efforts, like Jockey's Ridge needed some for some doom stabilization, so we wouldn't let contractors come and get it, but if a contractor was working with Jockey's Ridge, Derek Hatchell brought dump trucks over and we loaded them up, loaded them up, same with Eliza- Elizabethan Gardens, we loaded them up. Um, we do do some loading at the recycle center, candy, if we have two people working, people know that there's two people, they kinda figure it out, but we'll take tobacco and load up somebody's trailer back there, um, so if somebody has a trailer they won't fill with mulch, they can drag it over there and we'll load it, and you can take it home with you. As far as deliveries, I don't think, I'm not sure how many people want as much as we would want to take them in one time.
Like, to do large loads, huh?
Actually, we'd want to fill up at least like the F two fifty dump truck and dump the whole thing instead of somebody like assisting with unloading, like we want.
One cubic yard, right.
Well, no, it'd probably be more like three, four.
Right, a truck is three or four, but most houses will only need one, right?
Yeah, but yeah, they don't want like one, and that's kind of not utilizing your time and you're getting rid of stuff that way, but you'd, you'd wanna have one man who's driving with the truck, dump it in a spot in the yard and then go like, and leave.
Go, yeah.
Yeah.
Instead of, like, they need pitchfork and some help, take too much time.
Yeah, we don't have that, that's not really fair to seven thousand residents, that's just a handful.
I mean, we, we do want to get rid of it, we haven't um, I've never seen it run out in a short amount of time I've been here, but uh, seems like as soon as we have a big storm, we won't work through it. Little lobe area we've we've had with storms, we've are finally starting to work through it throughout the year.
Right, if the, you know, if the goal is to get, A, get rid of it, but A, get it to people that might not be able to to get it, I think it might be more of an opportunity for um, you know, I think of the Boy Scouts, but I also think like the National Junior Honor Society or the National Honor Society, they need to do community service hours. Um, that, you know, maybe we could help by saying, hey, if you need to make service hours and you've got a strong back and a pitchfork, I got, I got some work for you. Um, you know, it could be a good P R move too to just uh, have, ob- obviously every, every spring we'd send it out, emails, put it on the social media sites, but um, you know, if uh, if we've made some outreach to, who knows? Um, it may be that uh, um, some philanthropic group wanna do a fundraiser and say, hey, you don't have a way to get mulch to your house, I can get the free mulch, just make a donation to my philanthropy.
And you know, maybe, maybe, maybe more organizational centered, like do like a charity challenge or something like that, where they go and clean up people's yards and things like that.
Oh, right, yeah, that's a good partnership too, yeah, I gotta kinda think, you know, where, how we put multiple things together and solve more than one problem, but it's a great topic of conversation and and uh, Sue Kelly's uh, group and everybody that's in, you know, improvement at the town is probably figuring out how can we get more mulch to more people, cause it does make whatever you put mulch on looks nicer, right, that that's why we use mulch mostly, making things look nice. So, uh, yeah, maybe, uh, yeah, maybe we just need to promote it a little bit more.
And maybe combining the volunteering with the loading, so if you're, you know, if you're speeding that process up, you're getting more out there, so if you've got volunteers and you got, you know, just pick one Saturday a month or something where, well, they'll definitely load it, maybe it's not a Saturday, if you've got volunteers coming in, the trailer's loaded, they can, you know, let things go faster.
Do a little, do a little lap.
Combination, little combo.
Yeah, may, you know, maybe that we, you know, ask the public for their ideas on our social media, you know, we have a way to interact with folks, say, what's a we'd like to get mulch to more people, what what does the public have to say about it? Lots of ways we can attack, uh, attack this whole idea, really appreciate it, John, what a, what a great idea. So, yeah, so, so something'll catch on, we'll, we'll get something going.
All right.
Got it, we got a little time to to work on it. I don't know a lot of people putting mulch out in January. Either you missed it for the fall or you're too early for spring. Um, let's see here, so I was uh, running down Commissioner's Agenda, we started with one, and did you have anything else for Commissioner's Agenda?
Just to echo John's, the holiday market was incredible, that Ross and staff just do an amazing job every year, it's even, even more incredible.
Warm fuzzies, yeah, I I did get out to the one on Saturday, I originally wasn't gonna be able to make it and got to get there for the last hour or so and got to see it all lit up at night and talked to a bunch of vendors and they really appreciated it and said they had a pretty good year and winds all around, so thanks again to everybody who worked so hard to organize all those folks.
Mayor's effort, yeah.
Waiting list.
Some of the work.
All the people with opinions. Commissioners.
Nothing for me?
I'd like to echo what what's been said about the lights and the display, it looks great out there. Um, also wanna uh, compliment the fire department and the volunteers from the other departments in town that helped with the Santa.
Right.
Around town.
So great.
It was well received and I think Chief was even out there walking too, weren't you?
Yes, sir.
Ahead of about three or four other people.
Was up, she was there with us too?
I told my husband, no one ever, no man ever made me run that much since I was little.
Running, running.
Well, it was uh, it was well received, uh, it looked good and thank y'all very much, um, I know there's a lot of people involved in it and they did a great job. Nothing else, Mayor.
Super, anything for you, sir?
No.
Yeah, I, you know, can't reiterate those many things uh, any better than that, but I I will tell you that I do get a lot of positive feedback, I I try to promote those things in my own personal social media and it gets tons of love, people uh, talk about it and um, thank us for it and, and you know, Manio has their uh, big events that they do, but people really love Santa coming to the neighborhood and really love the holiday market, which is new and um, you know, that was what we all hoped to do when we got into public services, to give folks a sense of pride in their community and those two things have really done that over the last few years, so we appreciate everybody that goes the extra mile uh, on staff, we appreciate it. Uh, after the Commissioner's Agenda, the Mayor's Agenda, you saw in your packet that we've got a list of proposed meeting dates for twenty twenty-three. We've had a little time to look at them, I went and looked up N C State's spring break, cause I wanted to make sure I knew when that was. Turns out it is on the week of March thirteenth to the seventeenth, I don't currently have any plans to go out of town, but um, you know, I don't even know what the high school one is, I didn't cha- have a chance to look that up.
We, we actually did, and that's why we propose that you change um.
April's?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Right, so April, yeah, moved around a little bit, that's good.
Right.
So, we got it on the first week and the, and the last there, yep.
Yeah.
So, that's, that was a smart move, um, and like I said, I don't think it'll be a problem for me in March, if I do anything with the kids, it'll be later in the week. Uh, does anybody else have any thoughts about those dates, or are they, any conflicts, you know, coming up for your personal, oh gosh, I'm traveling again, where's the RV going now?
Um, January ninth, I'll actually be out of town that week. I'll wait till the kids go back in school and then we go and.
That's, yeah, January ninth is the first day back for N C State, but yeah. Uh, is it worth moving a meeting or, or what do you think? We have two meetings in January, yeah? There it is, yeah.
If necessary.
If necessary, yeah.
Necessary, um, you're gonna be out that week, so it would need to be, okay. So, after puts it kind of close to the twenty-fifth, which might not.
Um, well, that, that's really not a problem if we were, like, let's say, for example, we um, we have the meeting, I'm just gonna throw this date out, okay? We have the meeting on the eighteenth, and if we don't have the need for the twenty-fifth, and I can make the board aware, and you can change it, if 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 you wanna, if you want to change the meeting date from the ninth, any issues with planning, with, no, no, okay.
Okay.
So, basically, if I'm recapping, we'll set it for the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth, with the twenty-fifth being current optional, but.
Well, we'll, let's leave the twenty-fifth on the list, and then if we don't need it, we, you know, I can recommend to you to cancel it, um.
When we get closer, yeah.
But if that, if that works for the board, that would be an alternative, is to have it on the eighteenth.
That works for me, for me.
Is that okay, okay, thank you.
Great, we always like to accommodate, get us, as many of us here as much of the time as possible.
And then June twelfth is, it's totally fine, I'll be here, it's just one of my girl's birthdays. If the fourteenth is possible, but if not, it's fine.
No objection.
I don't have any problem with the fourteenth, I'm returning to that, you're all right? All right?
What time is the party?
Yes, we'll all begin by then.
Yeah.
I said our night just freed up, so we'll be there.
We'll be there, so we're happy as hell going on.
We're all good.
We're all good. Marion's nineteenth birthday party.
Oh, even better.
Nineteenth birthday.
Oh, she'll love it.
Right, all these people showing up at my birthday party. Any other thoughts, or should I say the motion is as presented with two adjustments? The ninth turns into the eighteenth of January and the June twelfth turns into the fourteenth.
Correct.
Perfect.
So, as amended as I just illuminated, I think that's my motion, your second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Have a calendar.
Thank you.
Great work, everyone, appreciate it. Uh, let's see, what else did I have here? Oh, I had, just had scribbled down when you were talking about volunteers that I'd love to just plant in everyone's brain the idea of um, uh, I'm I'm hoping that we can really add to the budget when we go into twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, some improvements to beach access has kind of been on my bucket list for a long time, um, but I also thought, I went to Surf Rider event last week and talked about beach nourishment was a topic that we're talking about, so I gave them a little rundown of how well our project went this time and uh, and uh, how much great grant money we got, and appreciate everybody that worked hard on that. Um, but it got me thinking about, um, you know, they've done a great job of of getting folks to a- adopt all of those beach accesses, so they all have some person or group of people that goes and cleans them up multiple times a year, and I thought, maybe we could come up with a grant program and maybe we could get the Visitors Bureau to fund some of that grant, like our own mini-grant program to say, if you want to uh, plant something or or make some extra improvement to your beach access that you've adopted, um, we're open to those proposals and we also have a little bit of a budget that could go to it. It's just a thought, and maybe that's a little too loosey-goosey and we wanna control it a little bit more, but we always have, you know, the ability to say yea or nay on whatever somebody might come up with, but you know, of course, you'd wanna use, if you were gonna put. But you know, of course, you'd want to use, if you were gonna put any plantings in, you would uh, you know, have the native species that would survive and work. They have to, you know, follow those sorts of rules that would probably come from the, um I'm blanking on the name of the group. The. Master Gardeners and those guys, right, right. The uh the, there's another word for it. It's running out of my head. But uh there are folks that are experts that are glad to help us with figuring that stuff out. But you know, I think all those beach accesses uh could benefit just from a little more love and cleaning up, you know, a little bit of hedging and sweeping and shoveling. And things that um that uh we want to encourage people to have, you know, feeling of ownership and pride of the beach access. They kind of are are, that that's us putting our best foot forward. It's one thing all of our millions of visitors get to see. They all go on a beach access. Almost all, vast majority of them are gonna go on a beach access and see it. And we've also talked about, you know, improvements to lighting, things like that, that are that are all possible in future budgets. But anyway, just throwing that out as part of my Mayor's Agenda. Uh I think that's all I've got. So Town Manager's Agenda.
Just want to point out to the board and anyone watching and anybody in the audience, the right flyer in the back. This is gonna be um a drawing for it on, at the um Holiday Market, December the seventeenth, this coming Saturday. So um I hope everybody can come out and take a chance at winning the kite.
Cool.
It's cool.
Does it, it has a story? Is is it handmade or is it a?
No.
It's a, it's a, it's a made in. It looks kind of homemade from here, but I guess you could buy these things.
Yes.
It's pretty cool, but you could actually fly it. It flies like a kite. Yeah, that's really cool.
Very cool.
Alright, yeah. End of the drawing. Alright, so that's Town Manager's Agenda. Town Attorney, anything?
Nothing.
That's good when you don't have anything.
Another good year.
We like that. Um Mr. D has the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. First item in the minutes from the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, monthly report from October twenty twenty-two, the Sinterrian Society Resolution. Got two more um ladies of the um society, Ms. Alma Hayman and Ms. Clara Bellman. Celebrated their hundredth birthdays on November fourteenth and twenty-fifth respectfully. And our mayor went over and presented them with the resolution, um I think some flowers. And got some very nice pictures that um you'll probably see soon on social media. Approval of the consent agenda will record these resolutions and their induction to the society. Um appointment to the Kill Devil Hills Local Firefighters Relief Fund Board, um with the resignation of Mark Evans. Um the department is recommending the appointment of Ronald Seidman to fill the position. And approval of the consent agenda will record his um appointment. And lastly, um number five, the recommendation for the acceptance of street improvements to Indian Drive. East of Seminoles Street and adoption official traffic map, pow bill map, um of the town to reflect the improvements. And with the um approval of the consent agenda, that will approve these resolutions and staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will uh add, as long as I forgot to mention in in Mayor's remarks that I've forgotten that it happened between then and now, I guess. Yeah, it was a few weeks ago. A really great visit with with uh three lovely ladies. Um two, two of them had turned one hundred and one, had turned a hundred and one. And she, a really great story, uh grew up, uh was actually born in Kinnick heat. Now, that's gotta be a small group, right? Actually, when she's, she's, her hus- or her son uh said that they thought that she was the last person living that that had been born in Kinnick heat. Because they knew a bunch of other people that have all passed on, so. And she's sharp as a tack and witty and interesting and fun and and like, I, we, I'm just inspired and want to, want to be that cool when I'm one oh one. I want to be one oh one at all. That's right.
I just wonder if we have an unusual large number.
Yeah.
It just seems, I mean, that's wonderful.
It's great, it's great. And uh, you know, I asked them all the same question. I said, so what, you know, what's, what's the trick to longevity? Is it, is it, tell, tell me it's urban every day, no? And you know, none of them had any big thing. They they uh, they stay active when it comes to to uh having a friend group. And I've read that everywhere. That that makes a big deal of difference and and the staff over there does a fantastic job just to see them working with everybody. Uh what a great uh cheery and fun and beautiful and clean and lovely environment over there, you know.
We're very fortunate to have it.
Very fortunate to have a great facility over there. And uh um apparently, when I got there, they were just getting ready to decorate. Apparently, they go all out on the Christmas decorations, so. I need to swing back by there to see what that's all about, because it sounded like it had a lot in store. So anyway, we're in the middle of a motion and I went and told a big story. So uh if there's no further discussion about the consent agenda, in case you forgot, we're talking about, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? We have consent agenda. Thank you so much. And second time tonight, I've lost my notes. After the consent agenda, we have one more opportunity for public comment. Yes, please.
Uh Larissa York, twelve oh five August Road. And I was going to say thank you to the town for the support. To the um Police Department for the support and the great awesome job that the uh Kill Devil Hills Fire Department did with the Santa around town. It was amazing. Um we had, you know, we were dancing down the street, we were running around, I mean. And I thank you to the uh your finance girls who came out. They were so much fun. And um we, uh I thank you for the the candy canes that we were able to give out. I have one request for next year. Dog bones.
Oh, great idea.
There were so many dogs and I felt so bad that I couldn't give them something. So I would love um.
Great idea.
That's a great idea.
Thank you. I appreciate everything.
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you for doing it.
Thank you so much for helping out. Yeah, we really appreciate it. Any, anyone else for public comment? Alright, hearing done. We'll close public comment. Response to public comment. Here, here, cheers, we agree. I was in the uh parade in Hatteras last weekend and same deal, we're like, oh, dog bones. We should have done dog bones. We were thinking the same thing. Also, the kids giving out the candy didn't realize that like, it's like the slow part of town and then there's all the people. They gave away too much candy in the beginning. Right. You've got to watch out for that, right? Pace yourselves. A lot of kids around the corner. They're looking at you like, where's the? So anyway, more candy next year and dog bones. Alright, that uh is the close of response to public comment and one more motion. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? To adjourn. Thank you so much. Really good. Appreciate it.
Happy holidays.